All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the May 27, 2025 meeting of the Town Board to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Present.
Councilmember Delarada.
Here.
Councilmember McPartland.
Here.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Here. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. We wish to respectfully acknowledge that Niskiuna is on the traditional lands of the Kaniki Haka and the Mohi Konuk peoples, past and present, and we honor with gratitude the land itself and the peoples who have stewarded this land throughout generations. We're going to start with a nice, long list of minutes to approve tonight. So I apologize in advance, we're going to have the same kind of motion over and over again. So may I have a motion to approve the minutes regular Town Board meeting from January 28, 2025?
Motion to approve the minutes from the January 28, 2025 regular Town Board meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes. All right, the minutes are approved. Can I do all?
You don't have to.
Okay, so we'll do. Can I have a motion? Well, I know, it was sort of like we were on a roll. But then I looked and I was like, oh, we have this whole thing. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February 11, 2025 special Town Board meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from the February 11, 2025 special Town Board meeting.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Minutes are approved. May I have a motion to approve the February 17, 2025 special Town Board meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes for the February 17, 2025 special Town Board meeting.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion for the February 25, 2025 regular Town Board meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from the February 25, 2025 regular Town Board meeting.
Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. I need a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion for the March 25, 2025 regular Town Board meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from the March 20, 25 regular Town Board meeting.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I need a motion for the April 8, 2025 special Town Board meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from the April 8, 2025 special Town Board meeting.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the last one, I need a motion for the April 22, 2025 regular Town Board meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from the April 22, 2025 regular Town Board meeting.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was good. You guys were busy. Yeah. All right. So we have some ceremonial resolutions that we're going to put right at the top of the resolution list. For now, we're going to open privilege of the floor. Did anybody sign up in advance? Okay, you absolutely can still speak. We asked that you limit your comments to three minutes per the rules of our public comment. And if you have any additional questions, comments, things that we're not able to discuss tonight, absolutely email me at supervisor@niskiuna.org. And I'd be happy to review them, have a longer discussion, but we're going to limit tonight to three minutes. So whoever would like to start? Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Joseph Jaikle, 914 of Roman. First of all, I wanted to say, love the artwork. This is great. It would be nice to see more things like this show up in Town Hall. I got to enjoy every single piece of artwork before Town Board meeting started. It was great. Secondly, I hope everybody had a good Memorial Day weekend, safe and happy. Third thing I just wanted to touch on is the Safe on Seven. Thank you for getting that out on the Town website. It's really important that we continue to push on that. I know you're doing things on your end. People like me are doing things on my end. It's really important that we keep the pressure on this so we can get something done with Route Seven. It's too important to let it slide. The mainly what I wanted to talk about tonight was I didn't make the board meeting last month. I did watch it on video. And I saw that Councilmember Delarada had asked one of the residents about, it was conversation about property taxes. And John, I think you said, you know, how long, how much is your property tax going up in the last 10 years? So there was a lot going on in that meeting, but I wanted to take a look at that. So I did look at my property taxes. And so what I see in the past 10 years is my property tax for the town has gone up around 11%. My school tax is going up about 17 and a half percent. When you combine the two things together, it's about a 15% tax increase overall. And I want to look at a couple of other things. Again, just to keep this kind of stuff in perspective, because I think this is all really important stuff from the resident's perspective and the Town Board's perspective. When we look at things like the yard waste fee, we're at $61 now. It was 58 bucks last year. It was 55 bucks the year before that. And it stayed that way for a couple of years. Then it was $45. Prior to that, we didn't have any, any fee at all. You paid for it basically in your property taxes. So, you know, we've seen 100% increase in that because it's a new fee. It's been around for a few years, but we're seeing that thing ratcheting up. May not seem like a lot, but a few dollars here when we add it on to other things makes a difference. When I look at the water and sewer bills, the utility rates, I looked at my last three bills because that's since the, that's been since the new utility rate design has been in place. So I ran my rate design with the old rates and the new rates. And what I have is a 70% increase. And I'm, I'm just about an average user. So just for perspective, the average use is 27,000 gallons. I used 26.8 my first bill, 21.5 my second. And I was just a little bit over this time at 30,000 gallons. So I'm not a heavy user. I'm not, I'm not a minimal user, but I've seen an increase of about 70%. So, you know, when I look at these different things, and there's also other fees. There's, you know, your dog license, there's permits, lots of different stuff. But I just kind of wanted to touch on these things here so that when we talk about taxes going up and rates going up, these are just the direct things that affect me as a taxpayer in the town. But I also have my National Grid bill that's going up, my grocery bills, just like you guys do. So I'm just asking that you continue to be really mindful and vigilant with looking at increases and maybe some more prioritization on purchases and, and taking action on something. And maybe we don't do a project this year, even though we'd love to do it. Because when I think about the taxes, I think about people in the town that may not be as financially sound as I am. That doesn't mean I'm at the top of the list. I can pay my bills, but it doesn't necessarily mean that I want to have to keep on paying extra. And we've got a bad reputation of being one of the highest taxed municipalities in the region. So I think we could do something about that, and I hope you keep on working hard to do that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaikle. Would anybody else like to speak?
Good evening. My name's Mike. I live at 3554 Consol Road. Once again, I'm here in front of the Town Board to please do something about the excessive speeding on Consol Road between 3550 and Buckingham and Consol. This makes my eighth written request, my 11th visit here. And you guys are still sitting there on your hands, not saying anything and not doing anything. I'm a taxpayer. You guys are coming up for election. I want something done about it. You either talk to me, but I want it in writing what was said. I want it in writing from one of you people to tell me why there isn't anything being done. You can tell me that you do put out all these stupid things, but it is not slowing down the traffic. I've lived there for 40 some odd years. I've had too many tragedies, and I'm trying to prevent another Route Seven by telling you that there is too much excessive speeding on Consol Road. And now this one's for our public safety person. Five times I've asked you to give me a copy of the rules and regulations of public safety in a, in a Niskiuna building according to anyone who has an emergency problem or a medical problem, and you refuse to give it to me. I want to know why. I'm a taxpayer. I need that information. It's supposed to be public, and that's your job. And if you don't want to do it, just resign. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Right. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay. With no one else, I'm going to close privilege of the floor, and we're going to move on to our committee reports. And we'll start with police and public safety.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Police and Public Safety Committee was held on May 1 under Operations. We discussed our governor traffic safety funded directed enforcement. It's the campaign of Click It or Ticket. And this is through the Buckle Up New York, and it's a provision of the grant that rerun this campaign. So that was May 19. It'll end on June 1. Under Fleet and Equipment, we'll be upfitting three different vehicles. The Specialist Tech Repair will be BearCom. And two of these are under the Burn Grant, and one is an officer car. We're purchasing gym equipment through the Burn Grant as well. The company is GNG under state contract. And Sergeant Henry worked with the vendor to design the space and figure out what equipment we wanted and needed. And he really took this project on. So we had a big thank you for Sergeant Henry for taking this project on and doing a great job with it under the Burn Grant. We also had talked about fixing the location, having a fixed location for the license plate reader through the Burn Grant. So we're going to be using that, those grant funds up pretty quickly. They have to be used up by September or so. So that's why we have a lot of grants going through rapidly. Under Building, we thanked Ray Smith and the Highway Department for restriping the parking lot lines for training. We have a lot of trainings this month. We had a pepper spray training. We had a stop DWI training. We had a spring firing range qualifications training. We had leadership certificate training and patrol rifle school. So we just kept our training up, working towards the accreditation process. Under Citizen Correspondence, we discussed Ray Street Parking. We were looking at the parking signage that needs replacing, and Chief Venna talked with us about just that the streets might need to, that street might need to have some improvement with the parking rules, regulations to get those emergency vehicles through. He said there are other streets that we should look at, too. So that's going to be happening in the near future. But we'll be talking a lot about Ray Street and working on making that a safer street for everyone. And we also had Tara over at Langs Pharmacy brought to our attention some concerns about Crescent to Clifton Park Road. There is like a landscape, a triangle, and it's really not clear where the stop sign is, and there are kids crossing from school buses. So we're going to be doing some traffic study in that area and working on making that safer as well. For Town Events, we had our Coffee with a Cop at the Senior Center. The Police Department supported Pedal Paddle Run on May 10 at Aqueduct Park. Police Department supported Niska Day on the 17th. And for Drug Take Back Day, they collected 109.2 pounds of drugs. For the Town Clerk, Clerk Martinelli talked about that no soliciting registry and that it was about to get rolled out. That was the registry where people can say they don't want to. Is it rolled out? Is it right? So things to come. We could register, you could register as a resident officially not wanting solicitors to come to your home. And then you'll be on the list, and solicitors will supposedly not come to your house. They're not supposed to. And for Fire Department News, we had the Stop the Bleed Project incarnation with the Rexford Fire Department and Fire District 2. And they almost completed all the Niskiuna schools with that training. So no, big thank you to them for that. For the School District, Chief Koshen presented at the Board of Ed meeting on April 23 regarding School Resource Officer. And there's a tentative MOA moving forward for that. And we discussed that the Cops and Kid Reading Program is continuing and being very successful. And for the month of May, Rosendale is the school for the program. For other, we had the Town of Niskiuna Event Application. That's about ready for a public hearing. We talked about the award ceremony for our department that Chief Koshen hosted again this year. And for Resolution, we had a few of them tonight. We have a resolution to authorize a purchase of the gym equipment through the grant funds, a resolution to call for a public hearing regarding the parking restrictions on Ray Street. That's to help get the emergency vehicles through. A resolution to award a contract for vehicle upfitting through the Burn Grant. Also one through our insurance company because we had a vehicle that was hit during a stop. A resolution to permanently appoint a sergeant in the Police Department. That's Sergeant Kafaga. A resolution, that is a ceremonial resolution that we'll be talking about for the police awards and for the Rexford Bridge LPR through Motorola through the Burn Grant. And our next meeting will be June 5 at 3:30.
Thank you, Councilmember Brennan. We'll move on to Highway and Community Programs.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Highway and Community Programs met Thursday, May 1. We started our meetings with our Highway Department, Ray Smith reporting on repairs that have gone on through the town now that the winter's over. Ruffiner and Rosendale is one that comes to mind, but there were many other areas where we're fixing basins and things that may have gotten damaged during the winter. Our crews are also out prepping the roads for paving. We do this before we pave any roads in the town. We have to make, make sure that all the drainage is good. We have to make sure that all the water and sewer is good in those areas. All things that are done by both our Highway Department and our Water and Sewer Department before we pave any roads in the town. So they're busy doing things like that throughout the town. Parks crews are working on our parks, getting all the parks open, cleaning them, getting the grass ready for the summer. Especially Charlie Brigami and Ron, his second person. They've been doing a lot of work to get all the bathrooms open in all our parks to be ready for, again, the nice weather, which hopefully will come sometime soon. Purchases wise, we have a resolution for two mortar mixers for the Highway Department. Also, want to go back a little bit. Also, our crews do a lot of work. We had Niska Day, obviously, in May. And we have to do a lot of work to get barricades out, make sure that the parade route is in good condition. So I want to thank them for all their hard work that they do for Niska Day. Lawn repairs. So during the winter months, sometimes the snow plows may clip a lawn that's on a corner, or the wingman might get some grass. So what we do here is we have those drivers and wingmen go out and repair the grass that they may have damaged on any resident's lawn. So we've got all of that completed. Yard waste, our yard waste pickup schedule is posted on the website. Also, it's been in the newspaper, and you can look that up. Please make sure that you follow the rules as far as using your cans and not make them too heavy in bundling your brush if you're putting that out. We've got resolutions for two seasonal workers tonight. We're full up with our seasonal workers, but we still have some permanent openings in Highway and Parks Department. Also, for our open discussion, we started talking about three and five-year plans for some of our parks. We're trying to get some more long-range planning for our parks and our recreation areas as far as equipment and maintenance of that of equipment. We have about 500 acres of parks in this town. I don't know if people realize that. It's a lot of property to manage and take care of. And Ray and his crew, they do an excellent job with it. We want to try to do some forward thinking and future planning for those, for those areas. Not to steal your thunder, but our Highway Department was very helpful. Highway and Parks was helping out getting some furniture, office furniture that was donated to the town. So a lot of heavy lifting and stuff. Supervisor will speak more about that, but great job by, by everyone involved in that. Next, our meeting, we talk about Community Programs, and that's Lori Parretti. She handles that for us here at the Town. Summer Registration, we discussed that. Employment, the Town Pool, we're hoping to have that open by June 21. That's what our schedule is for the opening of the pool. We discussed the spring soccer fields and the programs that we have there. Also, Paint Recycling Day was very successful here in the town. We collected quite a bit of material that goes out to be recycled properly so it doesn't get poured down the drain or not taken care of properly. So that was a great event by our Community Programs. We have some resolutions this evening for pool and playground employees, driving range employees, and independent contractors. The driving range is open. We've got some new nets and new mats and some new equipment out there. So if you're interested in that, go, go check it out. Lastly, we talk about our Seniors Program down in our Aqueduct Road Facility. Lynda O'Brien reports on that. We had a very successful blood drive. We wanted to thank CDHP. They've been giving us grant money to continue the programs that they have down there at the Senior Center for Exercise Programs and Food Programs. So we want to thank them and all the employees down there for a great job. They did. It's very interesting. I came to Town Hall this evening, and I saw the Chief of Police, and he said to me, you know, that Jack died. I said, yeah, I did know that. So Jack was just a senior that went to the Senior Center. He was a gentleman. It was a veteran, served our country, was in a wheelchair. But again, the impact that some people have and that our programs have for those people, it's phenomenal. It really is. One of our employees, when Jack didn't show up today, he called the family, hey, where's Jack today? They didn't realize that he had passed away on Sunday. So they spoke to one of the family members. And what he said was that for Jack, going to the Senior Center changed his life in the last three years that he was able, and he was down there participating in the programs and the people down there, changed his life. So that's what, that's what we're doing here. That's what Town Community Programs does. And everyone should be happy with that and should be proud of that because, you know, our seniors, we have a lot of them in our town. And they use our facilities and our programs. These are important things. Our next meeting is this week, May 29, because I'm out the first week of June, so it's a little bit early. Eight o'clock here in Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McPartland. We're going to move on to Water, Sewer, and Engineering.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. The Water, Sewer, and Engineering Committee met earlier this month on May 1. And Superintendent of Water and Sewer Matt Yedo provided the committee with an update on the River Road Water Main Replacement Project. As I previously reported, this is a 12-inch main, and it runs from Research Circle down to about the area of Blatnik Park. It's being replaced due to its age, because of the significant number of water breaks that occur in that area, and because of the need for increased capacity in this area. That water main services all or several of our industrial complexes, GE and Capel. The design for the project is complete, and we are working now on identifying some funding sources. The project is expected to cost just over $1 million, and will begin sometime next year. But as I said, Superintendent of Water and Sewer Yedo is working to identify funding sources and has made some progress there. At the wastewater treatment plant last month, I reported that our sludge dryer had far surpassed its life expectancy and would need to be replaced imminently. After further evaluation, we determined that the unit is in much better condition than we originally anticipated, but it does need about $30,000 worth of maintenance. A new unit costs about $6 million. So obviously, that $30,000 figure was a very welcome surprise, and we expect that it'll give us about five more years out of our current unit. Just a reminder to our residents that spring utility bills are due on Friday. Any unpaid balance will be added to fall bills, after which point any remaining amount due will be levied on 2026 property tax bills. Also, as a reminder, in light of the transfer station closing last month, we are offering refunds for completely unused transfer station punch cards. Requests for refunds must be received by the Water and Sewer Department no later than June 6. As far as resolutions on tonight's agenda, we have a resolution to appoint permanent employees and to hire seasonal workers. We have a resolution authorizing a standard fence easement agreement, a couple of resolutions regarding utility warrants and reconciliation, as well as the repair of a vacuum truck. Not the same as the vacuums that Councilman Delarada used to sell. But we do need some repairs to that vacuum and jet truck, so we'll be authorizing that expenditure tonight. Lastly, we'll be calling for a public hearing this evening to authorize the use of Sewer District 6 Reserve Funds. For anybody who's interested, it is Resolution 141, and it authorizes us to do repairs in the Water and Sewer Department. One of them I already mentioned, the $30,000 for the sludge dryer. And anyone who's interested can take a look. There's also some repairs to the SCADA system, to the hydrants and sulfide scrubber down at the wastewater treatment plant. And this is exactly why we have these reserve funds, to do repairs like this when they're needed. However, the law does require a public hearing before the Town Board can authorize those funds to be released. And so that hearing will be held at next month's Town Board meeting. And our next committee meeting will be on Thursday, June 5, 4:30 p.m. in the Schaefer Room. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Councilmember Moskowitz. We'll move on to Economic Development, Historic Preservation, and Environmental Conservation.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. We meet the first Friday of the month. Last month came a little bit quick for me, but this month we will meet on the 6th of June. And that's right here at the Town Hall. I'm glad that Joseph brought up the discussion on taxes. I did a little calculation, and in the last 12 years, the town taxes went up much less than 1% a year over the last 12 years. And the school taxes went up much more than the 17% that you mentioned over the past 12 years. Just over the past five years, if you take a home in Niskiuna, not the average home, but one worth about $400,000. Over the last five years, your town taxes went up about $85, but your school taxes went up $500. So the school taxes are a huge part of the resident's tax bill. And that is a very interesting dichotomy because the school elections and the voting on the school budget, that's done on off times, very low participation in voters. And that's why the school districts kind of have a free rein in their budgets. So hopefully, everybody takes that into consideration when we have the school district coming over to the Town Municipal Government because nobody spends money like school districts do in the state of New York. And the voters are to blame for that. I'm not saying that anybody else is but the voters, but it's very hard to get voter turnout in school districts, even myself. I find myself missing those votes because they're at off times. And whether that's deliberate or not, I don't know. But that's certainly something that should be on the top of everybody's list. Maybe getting those elections lined up better so more people will participate and really keeping an eye on the costs that are coming out of our school districts in the state of New York. There are no resolutions coming out of my Economic Development Committee this month. So I guess we're kind of resting on our laurels, so to speak. There has a lot, been a lot going on in the town of Niskiuna. I am very proud that of the work our administration and prior administrations have done with Momentive and E1 Capital. They completed a $68 million upgrade, GE Aviation, GE Renova, GE Healthcare. I mean, what's gone on from a business standpoint in the town of economic, in the town of Niskiuna is really a big motor and economic generating motor. And that is what makes a difference here in the town because inflation has gone up probably 40% over the years that we're talking about, right? Your town taxes have gone up less than 1%. So we've got to generate money from a lot of other places besides our residents, and the town has done a very good job of doing that. Phil Steck and our Assemblymen, our congressmen, have all been very good in getting us grant money for various projects. So I agree, Joseph. We really do have to take a step back and take a look. And yard waste, there was no yard waste previously. However, one good thing about that is that residents can opt out of the yard waste if they want to. But you're not going to get a better deal to get rid of your leaves and yard waste than having the town in Niskuna do it, if you have more than two trees in your yard anyways. So I do agree, we should keep all that into consideration and really keep, you know, keep it, keep an eye on our school district and our spending there because that's huge. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Delorada. I just have a few things to add to some of the comments made at the committee, mostly about parks. I've been chatting with our highway superintendent about the lock seven bolt launch, which I have to freely admit, I had no idea existed at all sadly. But he has been down there working with the Canal Corp. And they have done a lot of amazing work down there. They're almost done fixing some issues that have been happening over there. There were some safety issues with concrete. They've been working with that over the last week and a half or so. So I'm pretty excited. Hopefully we'll have some pictures that we can put on social media to show you the sort of the before and after of down there. They're also doing a lot of work at River Road Park. We had the pavilion and the new playground put into the back there. So they've been smoothing out the area around it, making sure that there's grass out there. So it's not a big mud pit. Lots of work in making sure that that's level ground and preparing for that next phase of the project. The other thing about our parks is that Blatnick Park is going to see a bit of an upgrade coming this weekend because the Niskuna Community Foundation is going to be planting some trees there as a part of their day of service. So the highway department helped to get those ordered. And we have tons of volunteers that are going to come out, sort of line the edges of the splash pad and a little bit over by the parking lot in Blatnick Park. So I can only assume that's going to make everything just cozier and provide a little shade if you need it when you're around the splash pad. The other thing that was mentioned was the office furniture from Momentive. So I had the privilege, I think I mentioned this a couple of months ago, of going over to Momentive and doing a tour there, which was so cool because you look at it from far away, the old SI building, and you're like, why is this grass so big? You go down, it looks like you're going into Oz or something. So it was very interesting, but what, one of the gentlemen there who was giving us the tour mentioned is that SI had done all this work, ordered all this furniture right before they decided to leave the space and they left all the furniture there. And so he sort of made this joke like, oh, you know, we gotta throw away all this stuff and it's new. And I thought, oh. So I gave him an email after the fact and said, you know, if you're getting rid of things, maybe we could come and take a look. And he has been more than gracious. Our highway folks, our parks folks have been over there dismantling and pulling over some really amazing furniture. So we're going to be able to do a little bit of a facelift here at town hall and we won't have to pay anything for it, which I think is awesome. We'll give a little bit of a color upgrade too. I feel like I'm not feeling the teal as much as I was back in the 90s. I'll also mention, this hasn't quite gelled together, but what we're looking at, and I only mention this in honor of Memorial Day from yesterday, but we actually do have a memorial park that's a triangle that's sort of across the street from the CVS. If you've ever noticed a fountain there, it doesn't look great. It's old. It's kind of one of those parks that not a lot of people are frequenting. So people are not necessarily making complaints about it, but we want to make sure that it looks beautiful, especially because it's a memorial park. So we've been looking into upgrading the fountain that I think has got to be 40 years old. And so we're seeking out some funding sources and I'm putting a lot of guilty pressure on other parties to help us out with this. So I'm hoping that we're going to have not only the fountain paid for, but maybe some landscaping as well to really make that look nice and upgrade it because it's sort of deteriorated over the years. The last thing, and I hate to end on a bad note, but I'm putting this out there because I'm hopeful that somebody watching this might say something to somebody's kid. But I, I started working here last year and I remember listening to some stories about vandalism in the parks right at the start of the season. There's always things that go on. This year, I'm really annoyed because somebody brought their skateboard into Avon Crest Park, where the tennis and pickleball courts are that we just spent, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars repairing and made a mess in there. And I don't, aside from having cameras and going after what I can only assume is young people, the only other way is to just, if you've got kids that are on skateboards and are over in that neighborhood, pay attention or say something. It's just so disheartening because we work so hard, to John's point, to get money to fix these things. And then it's just so sad two years later when we have people destroying them. And it's not just that. When we did a parks tour, garbage all over the basketball courts. It's a carry and carry out park. I drove by in softball. They had the dumpster in the corner. People are putting their own garbage, car seats, you know, half mattresses. And it's, it's really disappointing. And so again, I don't have a fix for it, but I'm putting it out there because I want people sort of saying it to the next person, like pick up your trash, pick up your juice box if you're done with it playing basketball. So I say that, I hope that hopefully it becomes something that, I don't know. Apparently this goes on every year. I keep saying like, maybe we could get some cameras. It's really expensive. We'll keep trying for some grant money to try to get those going. But until then, I guess just.
We don't really want to arrest, you know, kids.
You don't. You just don't.
I guess to your point, a little self, self policing.
I just mentioned it because it's not, we don't, nobody's going after them. So it doesn't get put out in the news. And I want you guys to know that this is happening and it's really annoying because we, we still have, it's like another job for highway to do and parks to do. And wow, I'm just super disappointed about the pickleball courts because pickleball is awesome. And now somebody's going to have a terrible shot on the other side with big chunks of it taken out. So that's all I'm going to say there. I am going to actually go a little bit out of order. If you go to the back of your agenda, you'll see a section called ceremonial resolutions. And we have two this evening. The first one is sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. And I believe what we're going to do is go through the resolutions for vote and then have Councilmember Brennan and perhaps Chief Koschan go through the resolution. We'll move on to the next one for a vote. And then Councilmember McPartlin will read through that for Niskuna Community Foundation. So we'll start with a vote for resolution 2025, 142, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A ceremony resolution recognizing and honoring members of the Niskuna Police Department for their exemplary, exemplary, thank you, it's a weird word, work and dedication.
And it's late, you know? All right.
I'll second.
And discussion? I'll just say I had the honor of attending this award ceremony and it was so cool because a lot of the old chiefs that have retired previously came in and were sitting in the back, some of them, you know, I sort of knew, everybody in the room knew. So it was a very warm reception. It was just, it's a nice way to make sure that we're recognizing people for their amazing work.
I'll add to that too. I know it got halted during COVID and Chief Koschan brought it back last year. And it's just an amazing hour or so of just realizing and having it like right there in front of you, the bravery and the selflessness, the quick thinking, the use of technology to solve crimes, the interdisciplinary, inter-county teams that work together to keep us safe and to solve everywhere from, you know, actual assaults to financial issues that we have as residents. So it, you know, great that that happens every year. It's so exciting that it's back and it's a very moving ceremony. So, thank you.
All right. Any further, oh yeah.
I wasn't able to make it to the ceremony this year, but I was at last year's ceremony. And I remember leaving the ceremony incredibly impressed by the work that our officers in our department does every day. I grew up with family in the police department. I spent 12 years as a police dispatcher. So I saw and heard the stuff that they do every day. But hearing the stories in greater detail and seeing them recognized for their hard work is, is amazing. So congratulations to all the officers who received awards.
All right.
And the timing, of course, on this memorial weekend is wonderful too, with the recognition of the sacrifice and the service of all the veterans as well as our police force. So thank you.
Yes, since the chief brought this back, I've been each year and it's, it's a very enlightening evening. The family members of the officers come, a lot of, as Aaron said, the retired chiefs, retired officers come. And it's just a very nice event because it does recognize the work, the very hard work that they do for our community. But we have that with a lot of our employees in this town. They do a lot of hard work for our, our residents. And we enjoy the awards for the police department. And maybe we need to do that in some of our other departments in their years to come here.
Holiday party.
Okay.
All right.
I just want to add one thing. We're very lucky that we live in a safe and a town where there's not a lot of crime and not a publicity on crime in town. But when you attend these award ceremonies or, I know from my experience as a dispatcher, our officers respond to crimes every day that I don't know that everyone is aware of, domestics, violent crimes, stabbings, things do happen in Niskuna, even though we live in an incredibly safe and we're fortunate to have such a great town. But I think it's important for our residents to know that our officers don't just sit in the St. Helens parking lot and run radar. They don't just pull over cars on Union Street and on Route 7. They're, they're busy and they're responding to some dangerous and some dangerous incidents. And so I think we should all appreciate them for that. And again, we're very lucky.
I agree. I'll even comment that one of, I didn't know this at the time, but one of the things that Detective Daly was awarded for was my vehicle that was broken into. And I didn't realize how much work he did after the fact because they had done a series of these kind of, kind of smash and grabs and they weren't able to get through my windows, but they caused a lot of damage and it was really annoying. I looked weird, like flying around with a garbage bag on the side of my car. But it really does, it happens and they're quick to get after it. And I'm, I'm very grateful for all of you. So we will call the roll.
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delorada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes and I will.
Ceremonial resolution recognizing and honoring members of the Niskuna Police Department for their exemplary work and dedication. The following resolution was offered by Councilmember Brennan, who moved its adoption and seconded by, Bill McPartlin?
Yes.
Be it enacted by the town board of the town of Niskuna as follows. Whereas National Police Week was established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962 and takes place in May each year. And whereas National Police Week is a collaborative effort of many organizations dedicated to honoring America's law enforcement community. And whereas the town of Niskuna formally designated May 12th through May 18th as Police Week in the town of Niskuna by resolution 2019-138 to publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And whereas National Police Week took place from May 11th, 2025 through May 17th, 2025 this year. And whereas in honor of National Police Week and the hard work, service and dedication the members of the Niskuna Police Department put in day in and day out, the chief of police held a 2024 award ceremony on May 15th, 2025. And whereas the May 15th, 2025 award ceremony was held at town hall and recognized and honored the members of the Niskuna Police Department who demonstrated distinguished and exemplary service in 2024. And whereas the categories for which awards were given at the May 15th, 2024 award ceremony included the life-saving award, the distinguished service award, the department commendation award, citation for merit and letter of merit. And whereas it was a heartfelt event in recognition of the men and women who sacrificed to serve the town of Niskuna and its residents and to go above and beyond to ensure Niskuna is a safe community. Now, therefore, be it resolved on this 27th day of May in 2025 in the town of Niskuna, the town board hereby recognizes and honors the 2024 Niskuna Police Department award recipients as set forth below and all members of the Niskuna Police Department who serve our community and work tirelessly to make the Niskuna community one we want to be part of.
All right, we'll move on to our second and our last ceremonial resolution. This one is sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian. The ceremonial for NCF, will the clerk please read?
A resolution, a ceremonial resolution recognizing the 25th anniversary of Niskuna Community Foundation.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll start with some discussion. I'm not sure if anybody else has anything to say, but I went back through the last five years of resolutions and I was able to find just in the last five years, the list of things that the community foundation has done only for the town. And this is benches for the playground and splash pad area, defibrillators and protective covers for town parks, hallmaster trailers and swing away trailer jacks for radar speed signs and solar panels, consulting fees for phase one of the natural resources inventory, dog park improvements, bike repair station at Lions Park, two basketball hoops and backboards and benches at the senior center. That's one entity in only five years. I probably could have spent all afternoon digging through them, but we're very lucky to have Donna Evans and Briggs McAndrews here to be presented with this ceremonial resolution. I'm so grateful for your organization and for all that you do.
So that is one big reason, Joe, why your taxes went up less than 1% over the last zillion years because of these great organizations like the Niskuna Community Foundation. That's a great contribution. I mean, that's, that's phenomenal. Thank you.
Oh, I was a member of the Niskuna Community Foundation for 10 years and I served on the distribution committee on the foundation. And it was probably one of the most rewarding experiences I've had in my years with public service. Just some of the things that Aaron read is just a small piece of what the community foundation has done over the last 25 years. The list is much longer and much more inclusive of all organizations here in the town. And the phenomenal work that they have done for our residents and everyone here in Niskuna. And we have one of the founding members here, Briggs McAndrews with us, who, as you know, served also at the school district as a superintendent. But a person who, him and his family have given so much to the town of Niskuna. They set the bar very high for everyone, very high. And you just can't say enough good things about the work that he's done and the work that the foundation has done. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Cindy Philippi. She's another community member that has done phenomenal work at the foundation and, and for the town. So just honor, it's my honor to be able to present this tonight.
I can add to that too. I was on the distribution committee too. It was an amazing experience to be able to see who's asking for money in town and what amazing projects are they doing? And like it, the distribution committee touches every part of town, every person, every population. And it's all encompassing and it's, it was such an amazing experience just to know these, you know, all the people donating money and then the people donating their time to do the best work with the money. So that was an honor I had. I joined, well, 13, I think it was like 13 years ago and I just started in Niskuna District. I had changed districts and they said, we need a school person. We need someone with that perspective. And I was like, okay. Someone with boots on the ground doing it. And it was amazing. And one day I came to them and I said, you know what we need? They're hungry kids. We need money to help these families. And they were the first funding source for Niskuna. And they've been right there ever since, buying us freezers and fridges and helping us just be seen in the Niskuna Day Parade and just spreading awareness. So yes, this definitely a needed honor tonight.
Any further discussion? All right.
All right.
You want, we'll call the roll quick and then.
Yep. Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delorada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes.
Thank you.
You're going to say something later. There we go. Excellent. Come on, we're going to give you the mic. Come on, Donna, come on up here. I'm going to read this off and we're going to present this to you. Come on. Now we're going to give the mic over to Briggs. All right. Take a picture. She'll send it to you. All right. The Niskuna Community Foundation for its 25-year anniversary day service, June 7th, 2025. Whereas the Niskuna Community Foundation is celebrating 25-year anniversary of serving the Town of Niskuna. The Niskuna Community Foundation started as a community-wide conversation on ways to engage Niskuna's young people and evolved to the broader goal of making life better for everyone in the town. And whereas the Niskuna Community Foundation was founded by the community for the community on December 31st, 1999 upon signing agreement to become affiliated and geographically fund the Community Foundation for the cap, the greater capital region. And whereas the Niskuna Community Foundation is the only community foundation dedicated solely to meeting the needs in Niskuna. Whereas since 2000, Niskuna Community Foundation has provided more than three quarters of a million dollars to strengthen the Niskuna community and improve lives through grants to local nonprofit organizations and programs and student scholarships and awards to outstanding teachers. And whereas NCF's investment in our town is evident everywhere, the Niskuna Community Foundation supports town programs, special events and initiatives that enrich our community. NCF grants have funded life-saving AEDs in our parks, digital speed warning signs, supported free family movie nights and celebrated Niskuna's first national night out. Whereas on Saturday, June 7th, 2025, Niskuna Community Foundation will celebrate its 25th anniversary with a community-wide day of service event. NCF will bring more than 150 volunteers together to accomplish a wide range of projects for local nonprofits and programs that serve Niskuna residents. And whereas NCF's 25th Anniversary Day of Service intends to build community, make meaningful connections, raise awareness of community needs and shine a light on local organizations meeting those needs. And whereas NCF's 25th Anniversary Day of Service reflects and celebrates the very best of our community and the power of what we can accomplish for others. Therefore, let it be resolved that the members of the Niskuna Town Board recognize the Niskuna Community Foundation for its invaluable contributions to our community. Congratulate NCF and its volunteer board of directors, their 25-year milestone and establish June 7th, 2025 as the honorary Niskuna Community Foundation 25th Anniversary Day of Service in the Town of Niskuna. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I think you folks should know, just a real quick again, this is totally off that, but when I first came here to take over the job as superintendent, uh, the person who taught me everything I needed to know was Bill's mother. She was my secretary and I just turned to her every time I needed to know something. So I, I still think of all she did for me. Uh, just a couple of quick words. The, uh, I've worked on boards for 35 years or been on them, worked with them. And I must say that the Niskuna Community Foundation Board is a fantastic board. And you're really lucky that, uh, that board is so committed to doing good things for Niskuna. I'm going to deviate from just this and I only had a little bit of stuff to say. I will deviate it for, uh, just a moment. You know, the words that stick to me way back when we founded and our co-founder, uh, Cindy Philippi would have loved to be here tonight, but she's sacrificing because she's a Disney world and, uh, making that kind of sacrifice. But, um, the, the term was quality of life. For young people, quality of life for everybody in Niskuna. And we, uh, we all felt this is a great community. This is a wonderful place to live. It's a wonderful place to have your children go through schools. And, uh, quality of life was the word and it continues to be, I think, the word for our foundation board that is there something that is out there that needs to be helped? Or is there a way to then improve whatever? So I think it's always, uh, on the board's mind is what we're doing, improving or continuing that high quality of life that we have here in Niskuna. And, uh, after 25 years, it's really nice to be recognized by the, um, board, by, uh, the people of Niskuna. And they really, the people of Niskuna have always supported the foundation. So it's a, it's a collaborative venture that, uh, we have going on here. And, um, we'd like to thank you for your recognition. To the board, to the foundation in particular. And, uh, you know, it's a nice pat on the back to have you folks letting us know that you're appreciative of what we've been doing. So thank you very much. And, uh, we're out there, uh, you know, I have, uh, there are three generations of my family living right now here in Niskuna. And we want those generations and more generations to have the quality of life that you're providing. You guys, the foundation, the police, it's really a place to be. So thank you.
Thank you so much. It's such a pleasure to have you here. All right. So we're going to move on to the boring resolutions now, I'm sorry to say. All right. We're going to jump back up to item nine, which is 2025-120, sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to enter into a renewal agreement for insurance coverage for the town.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes on to 2025-121, sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
A resolution authorizing certain budgetary modifications and inter-fund transfers.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? And will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes on to 2025-122, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution hiring student and seasonal workers in the town's engineering, water and sewer department.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes on to 2025-123, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland.
A resolution appointing two grounds workers in the town's parks department.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes on to 2025-124, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of gym equipment for the town's Niskuna Police Department.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? It's part of the burn grant. All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
And 2025-125, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland?
A resolution authorizing contracts for the public's display of fireworks for the town Niskuna's Niska Day celebration.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
In an abundance of caution, I'm actually going to recuse from this vote just because of my role on the Niska Day Committee.
Okay, four ayes and one recused.
All right, on to 2025-126, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan.
A resolution permanently appointing a person to the position of police sergeant.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This is a shame. All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes on to 2025-127, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland.
A resolution hiring additional employees in the town's Office of Community Programs.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I am going to abstain from voting on this resolution. My cousin is a very longtime, uh, employee down at the town pool. Um, she's worked at the pool seasonally since long before I was on the town board. Um, the town's code of ethics very clearly states or lists relatives. Cousin is not considered a relative. However, a couple of years ago, there was a group of people who disagreed with my very clear interpretation. So to avoid having to convene the ethics board, I will abstain.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Abstained.
Councilmember, uh, Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Four ayes.
Resolution passes on to 2025-128, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to enter into an easement agreement with the owners of 849 Oregon Avenue.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
Uh, the next is the introduction of proposed local law D, 2025, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Is that a resolution for a hearing just out there? Got it. Oh, there we go. Okay, so 2025-129, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution calling for a public hearing on proposed local law D, 2025, to amend the vehicle and traffic code to prohibit on-street parking on a portion of Ray Street.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? We've talked about it in committee and then in the, um, uh, Councilmember Brennan talked about it in her report. Just making sure that we're safe and vehicles can get through on Ray Street. We'll have that public hearing at the next meeting.
Can I just add to that? This, we, we had two different discussions at committee. One was whether or not we wanted to make a whole section of the street so that there's only parking on one side instead of parking on both sides. I had a resident come, um, and speak to me about that. The other concern that he brought to the attention is that there was no parking here to the corner. I'm, I think it's the south side of the street, but not the north side of the street. And I'd spoken with Ray, Ray went and took a look at it and he confirmed that there was no signage on the other side of the street. We went back to code, it wasn't there. So this really is only addressing the no parking here to corner on the other side of the street, but there is going to continue to be discussion because, um, Chief Benno was at that meeting and did confirm that there is issues getting fire trucks down that street when there's parking on both sides. So it's just something that we need to look into further, but this is the first step in that process.
Yes. And if you've ever tried to take a right with a big car like me, I'm a terrible driver anyway, but you're hitting that curb or something's happening, right? So, uh, that will be the public hearing for next meeting. And any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes on to 2025-130, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland.
A resolution hiring seasonal laborers in the highway and parks department.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes, 2025-131, sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
A resolution changing the June 2025 Town Board meeting date.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, and just to reiterate that we're just going back to the Tuesday. We had moved it to Thursday, but no primaries, so same old, same old. Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes on to 2025-132, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution authorizing a warrant for the first quarter 2025 corporate utility rents.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes, 2025-133, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution awarding a contract to conduct a corrosion study at the town's water treatment plant.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes, 2025-134, is sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
A resolution acknowledging completion of the justice court audit.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm going to abstain from this, uh, resolution as well. The results of this audit are submitted and reviewed by State's Unified Court System. UCS is my employer and I've been directed by the court system to avoid the appearance of any conflict. So I will abstain.
Okay. It was super fun going through the papers.
No, our, our clerk, clerks in the town court do an excellent job. They have all the material ready when we go in to do the audit.
Meticulous, like amazing.
They do, uh, keep very good records there.
I want them to like come organize my closet. All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Abstained.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Four ayes.
The resolution passes 2025-135, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan.
A resolution awarding a contract for the upfitting of police vehicles and authorizing the upfitting of four police vehicles.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
Resolution passes 2025-136, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of license plate readers technology for the Niskuna Police Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes. Bye-bye. Resolution passes 2025-137, sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a new sewer server with storage.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We went over this agenda. It's already budgeted for. We're just moving up the purchase. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes 2025-138, sponsored by Councilmember McPartlin.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of two mortar mixers for the use in the town's highway department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? These were both budgeted for as well. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian?
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes 2025-139, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution authorizing the repair of a back jetter truck.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Delarada?
Aye.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan?